She asked me if I'm ready for a review.
What am I? Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Sherry Guidry.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost. Father, in the name of Jesus, O Lord, we sense your presence in all that has happened. For we know that you have not vacated your throne. O God, this has truly been a wake-up call for all of us. Draw us closer to you. Let this day be the day that we choose to walk with you further. Use us all to bring hope, healing, and help. Bless this chosen mayor, the mayor pro temp, and the council and the residents of this city with more love, more unity, and a spirit of a healing heart, health and prosperity, and beyond more than we could imagine or think, so that we can bring you glory. Take what happens and what appears to be a tragedy and turn it into something beautiful. I pray hearts are opening up to receive your comfort, your biblical truths, and most of all, you. Help us to hear your voice, sing your word, speak your word in this season. O God, help us not to regard iniquity in our hearts and help us to get rid of all conflict in our hearts towards our brother and our sister. Jesus, help us to rescind all conflict and repent quickly in this hour. We pray for all public servants and all our small businesses in all sectors, in all districts, in all industries throughout the city, the parish, and the nation. Father God, tonight we ask that you would bless your servants as we rise out of this pandemic together. And, O Lord, with your help, we will get through this with every race, every parish, every state, and every nation, every day, with your grace, in the mighty, strong name of Jesus we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Here.
Councilmember Natalie Lopez.
Present.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Bussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember Sherry Guidry.
Present.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. We have no public comment. We'll move to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of the May 5, 2020 meeting as published on May 15, 2020.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Lewis. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Ledbetter. Do we have any discussion on the minutes? Hearing seeing none. We'll roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Yes.
Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Thank you. We have no persons on item three to address the council. We are hoping this is our last meeting that we don't let the public in. We'll have to deal with how many people we let in, but we'll deal with that in the future. So we move on to item four, A.
Resolutions. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute foreign on behalf of the city of Nia Ibiriya. A certificate of substantial completion from Minville Lumber Company pertaining to the completion of a contract for Phase One. Doc Worries Wing and George Rodney Corp.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Guidry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Bussard, do we have any questions?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I see they had an inspection report on that project. Is those funds going to be withheld until they're completed?
Yes, sir.
And do they have a time period?
They do. There's a 45-day retainage time period, and so in that time period, it needs to be complete so that when we record the no-lease certificate, we can go ahead and pay them. I actually attended the walkthrough and looked around myself, so there are dollar values next to each item, and that money will be held until those items are complete.
Cool.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Yes.
Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Thank you. Item four B.
Resolution accepting proposal and awarding contract to B.R. Construction Company Incorporated for a project entitled renovation to City Park Pool House and authorizing the mayor to execute all contract documents in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle. Do I have a second? Councilman Dustin Swier, do we have any discussion? And I have one item to talk about. If any discussion? Yes, sir. That's where I'm heading because it's kind of a different project.
Right.
What we're doing, the roof is asbestos, and the roof is rotten. And if you look at the pool house, no offense, you can tell that. So we're hiring a contractor to remove the asbestos and remove the roof. Now, the pool house will be able to operate. We're not sure if we're opening a pool this year. That remains to be seen. But much like the former pool house in the West End never had a roof. You're going swimming anyway. If the weather's bad, the pool is closed. So what we're going to operate for a while will be the walls, the restroom, the lockers, but all of that will just be in an open-air setting. And that gets rid of the asbestos roof. We can't even patch the roof because the structure underneath it is rotten and the asbestos issue. So that's going to take the roof off, and that'll be Phase One. We all know that our pool is very old and needs a lot of upgrading. We also know that that pool house really needs replacing. We have kicked around ideas of an indoor pool, of doing a new pool somewhere else, and having maybe one really nice facility. That's something that we're still talking about. But for now, we're going to try to continue to patch the pool, and believe me, I say patch, and patch the pool house up that we get another couple of years out of it. So I don't want anybody to think when they see renovating that we are dumping, you know, a ton of money into this or that it is going to be a new facility. All this is is a step, but it's a step toward something different. But as the economics of it works, that we can spend this small amount of money and get another year or two out of it. Any questions?
Yeah, ma'am, I've got a comment.
Sure.
I'm glad you brought that up. I'm glad Dustin actually clarified.
Yeah, well, I was going to.
When I said on the Parks and Recreation Board, I would get a lot of complaints about West End Park Pool versus City Park. And I said complaints, being close with Ms. Peggy Dirac, who was my aunt. I would hear a lot of stuff. They were funny through me. So I had a long talk at that time with one of the park workers who had been with us a long time that worked both pools. And they gave me a great understanding about those pools, that both of them have ran their course.
Yes.
And people didn't understand, you know, that the money would cost, and they also didn't understand. I have an opportunity to travel the country, seven or eight states on conferences dealing with community service, and I learned that they were closing pools all around the country because of liability purposes. So for us, just to have a pool in the city is a great thing. I think when we're going to get around it, all, you know, all-inclusive, in the middle-of-town park pool, I think it's going to be a town, you know, thing that's going to bring us together. So, you know, thank you for clearing that up and letting us know so our constituents can know that it's not a West End versus a City Park thing.
And that's the beauty part about us. It never is. We're all one town, and it's about doing the right thing for our whole community. Thank you. Sherry, you had your hand up.
Yes, sir. For the proposal, just for our constituents to know, we're looking at about $35,500 for the renovation of...
Correct. And the bulk of that money, as you can imagine, is the asbestos removal.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none. Roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Absolutely, yes.
Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Thank you all. Now we move on to four C.
Resolution accepting proposal and awarding contract to B.R. Construction Company Incorporated for a project entitled Bullynee Plaza Gazebbo Repair and Reroof and authorizing the mayor to execute all contract documents in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Sherry Guidry. Do I have a second?
Second.
I don't, I think it was Councilwoman Swier, Dustin. Sorry, Mr. Bussard, you got beat. We have any discussion on this item? And just to fill you in, this is to replace the rot at the gazebo downtown, which is utilized in every festival, every downtown event, and to remove the wood shake roof and put a metal roof on it. It'll be a dark green, you know, historic metal roof. But I think that it's long past time. Since I've been here, I've received every festival, every time we do something downtown, somebody points out, just what that shape the poor little gazebo's in. So that's what that's about. Any discussion? Hearing seeing none. Roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Yes.
Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Thank you all. Four D.
Resolution accepting proposal and awarding contract to Prefer Electric Incorporated for a project entitled West End City Park Electric Panel Replacement and all the rising the mayor to execute all contract documents in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion. Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. This item is required from the insurance company, much like we did last year, that we had to replace the Federal Pacific panels here in this building because they've been outlawed and the breakers don't trip and they cause fires. The insurance company did an inspection and asked us to, didn't really ask us, but we have to replace these panels at West End Park because it's built basically, you know, that same late 50s, early 60s construction when those panels were popular. So that's the reason for this. The catalyst is our insurance company is requiring this.
Mayor, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any period of time that the West End won't have power?
No, they're going to work it as they did this building. They came in. There could be maybe a day that it would be out, but for the most part, they worked well when we did this building. It's another contractor, the same contractor's bid, it's someone else is low. But we'll work that out to where they won't lose power for any amount of time. The good thing is, right now, our gyms aren't open. I actually am trying to speed this up to at least get the major interruptions done before we open the gyms back.
Good, thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so combining both of these jobs, we're looking at $22,240 to get everything done, sir?
Uh, that's not the, I'm going to have to look. Give me a sec. How much?
It's $13,468 for that little bit.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the panel replacements at West End Park, so that must have been one of the proposals.
Yeah, yeah, the $13,000.
$468.
Yes, I just wanted to look at the figure.
And that's for both parks?
That is for just the West End. That's only for the center and the West End.
Okay, West End for the electric panel.
Martin Luther King Center to do the panels.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Sure. Hearing no further discussion? Call for a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Yes.
Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Four E.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the yearly maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup with the Department of Transportation and Development for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Swier, second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I think as long as I've been on the council, it's been the same amount of money they pay us.
We lose money every year, sir.
Have we ever even tried to request?
Yes, sir, we have, because we, Leroy pointed out when I got here, just as you're saying, that we never have gotten an increase. It is mandated by the state that we do this, and we tried, but they basically said there is no more money, and that's what you get. So it's kind of a mandate, so we cut the grass. And I mean, it's a service, you know, if you say, okay, I'm not going to cut it, you know how many state highways and right-ofways and all the areas of our town that would just really look bad? So we don't have a choice. We have to do it. Maybe I should look at it. I'm glad we get paid something to do it, but we did try.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
What's the amount?
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand?
Three fifty, yeah.
Yeah, and we probably spend, Leroy calculates, we probably spend $45,000 to $50,000 to do this. So like I said.
But it's got to be done.
In this economy, maybe I should be glad we get something, and it has to be done, you know?
I agree.
Any further discussion? Well, I ask you for a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Yes.
Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, item five A.
Introduction of Special Budget Amendments and to Set for Public Hearing. Introduction of Budget Amendment Ordinance Number 2019 dash 2020 dash 07. Amending the ordinance levy in certain taxes appropriating the funds necessary to defray the expenses and liabilities of the city of Nia Ibiriya for the year 2019 to 2020. To amend the budget to revise fiscal 2020 projections and to set for public hearing on June 2, 2020.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle. Do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Guidry. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Yes.
Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Thank you all. Madam Clerk, five B.
Introduction of Budget Amendment Ordinance Number 2019 dash 2020 dash 08. Amending the ordinance levy in certain taxes appropriating the funds necessary to defray the expenses and liabilities of the city of Nia Ibiriya for the year 2019 to 2020. To amend the budget to reflect insurance settlement and repair of marquee and to set for public hearing on June 2, 2020.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilwoman Guidry, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Bussard, any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
I know you got prices from that company that did the other, the sign for the marquee. Do you have any time period it would take them to fix it?
He could start it pretty quickly. We are waiting, you know, once this is done and the public hearing's over and that we can get our settlement check. These are the steps we've got to take to get it. So Jeff has been working on that diligently. As soon as we can get the check, I think he can start.
So it'd be pretty nice for all that to be fixed with the Blue Dog with the museum.
It really would. And the fact that the top of the marquee is fixed, that the Evangeline lights up again, it's just time to get it all.
It's amazing with that short block, how much money has been spent.
It is. It is. It is. So it's coming as quick as I can make it out.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mayor, the actual sign that's blinking, but what about the wraparound?
That's what we're talking about. That's probably the marquee. That whole bottom area is what was hit by Trump.
Yeah, it's going to look nice, too. Thank you.
It will. It will. Anybody else? Then I'll ask you for a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Yes.
And Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Madam Clerk, five C.
Introduction of Budget Amendment Ordinance Number 2019 dash 2020 dash 09. Amending the ordinance levy in certain taxes appropriating the funds necessary to defray the expenses and liabilities of the city of Nia Ibiriya for the year 2019 to 2020. To amend the budget to recognize K-9 narcotics grant and to set for public hearing on June 2, 2020.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Swier. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, can you tell us a little bit about the grant? I know it costs a lot for the K-9 dogs.
We've been very fortunate to get grants for two dogs. We have four shifts. Our ultimate goal is to get four dogs, where we would have one for each shift. So with these, we get grants for equipment. We get grants for, you have to put a kennel at the person's house who's the dog handler. You've got a ton of equipment. You've got the cost of the dog, and these dogs are very expensive. So any K-9 grant, they come up every year. Jane and Assistant Chief work really hard on these, so any one of these that we can apply for to get you the equipment or another dog or whatever we can get, we do. And then it's, we're checked on every year by the person who puts this grant out, and they check on the dog, and they check on the progress. So you'll see these as often as we can until we have four dogs that are suited up and that we have a dog feed shift.
They get a bulletproof vest?
Uh, yeah, they have, they have a vest and they have equipment, and yes, ma'am. Any further discussion?
Yeah, ma'am.
Sir.
I love dogs. I hate drugs and what they do to people. Thank you for what you do.
Well, I appreciate it, and this is a good investment, you know? This, once we have four dogs, I really think, you know, because right now, you have to call the handler out or, you know, and I, it's, sometimes those guys have worked all day, and then they got to get out of bed to come back, you know? So it is going to be nice when we, I think we'll make a bigger difference in the community when we have four dogs. Further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Yes.
And Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Thank you all. Item five D.
Introduction of Budget Amendment Ordinance Number 2019 to 2020 dash 10. Amending the ordinance levy in certain taxes appropriating the funds necessary to defray the expenses and liabilities of the city of Nia Ibiriya for the year 2019 to 2020. To amend the budget to account for costs to remove and replace FPS switchgear and panels and to set for public hearing on June 2, 2020.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Bussard.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Any discussion? Knock. Roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Yes.
And Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Thank you all. Five E.
Introduction of Budget Amendment Ordinance Number 2019 dash 2020 dash 11. Amending the ordinance levy in certain taxes appropriating the funds necessary to defray the expenses and liabilities of the city of Nia Ibiriya for the year 2019 to 2020. To amend the budget to account for acceptance and utilization of 2019 $1.25 million bond and to set for public hearing on June 2, 2020.
Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Bussard, second.
Second.
Councilman Lewis, any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
It should be pretty close that we'll be able to start spending that money.
Yes, it is. No. These bonds take a while.
They'll all be set for May 27.
Yeah, so the end of the month. Any further comments? Roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Dan Doyle.
Yay.
Natalie Lopez.
Yay.
Marlon Lewis.
Yay.
David Bussard.
Yes.
Deidre Ledbetter.
Yes.
Sherry Guidry.
Yes.
And Dustin Swier.
Yay.
Great. Councilman remarks? I'll start with Natalie.
You started, you started on that side two times in a row, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm almost left-handed. I'm sorry.
But it's up to you, Mayor.
Okay. Well, you know what? We all out of order, so, yeah. Anyway.
I have none.
You have none. Okay. Councilwoman Guidry. We're out on anyway.
I just wanted to say that it's been a sight for sore eyes as we phase out for Phase One and this pandemic. And I was just so proud to see in my district, the Rodriguez Park, I call it the Blue Dog Park on Main Street as it was coming up. And I've been trying to do a little exercising and stuff, and I seen the residents walking, exercising, and they would stop and take a lot of pictures. That was just an enlightenment and a refresher for our city and for the residents that are here. I know the mayor, myself, Mr. Marlon Lewis, Ms. Deidre Ledbetter, this entire council, the members, are working to improve all the parks. Along with that said, I wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Heather. I went and played tennis on yesterday with my daughter and the city park, and I thought maybe I would have made it to the city council here with the casts on my legs, but I made it through. But I just wanted to, because she almost beat me. But I wanted to say that the city park was, it was just nice. All the lights were working. The tennis court was clean. Everything was just nice in the city park on yesterday. So I just wanted to give the crew there and Ms. Heather a little shout out. I want to remind the residents, don't forget on tomorrow, I believe it is, 12:30 to 2:30, the West End Park Grab and Go Meal Site for Iberia Parish. And I haven't had a chance to make it there yet, but I'm getting down there. Don't forget to contact your councilperson in your district and find out, you know, all the times and dates and locations for the free meals for those that need it. Please remember to support our local businesses here. Show them their appreciation that they deserve. You know, sometimes we have to put our money where our mouth is. Sometimes. So I've partnered with the Snowball Factory here on Center Street and purchased at least 80 snowballs for our students here, the children here. The mayor also is on board with that, right, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
And I just wanted to extend that out to the city council members. If you want to purchase some snowballs for the kids, they've been through a lot in this ordeal, kind of with a great uncertainty. So if you want to partner with me, the Snowball Factory, I did 80. If you want to do less or more, feel free. Just contact me after this meeting has adjourned. Also, too, just remember to keep washing your hands and wearing your masks in public places. I went to an establishment here in Nia Ibiriya. To my surprise, everybody didn't have a mask on, and it was just me and my daughter in the entire store with a mask. So even as we phase out, we want to continue to remember to wear our masks and protect ourselves and the people around us. Let's see. I think that might be all I have, Mayor, at this time. I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bussard.
It's nice to see that regular business is being started again. It's been a big six to eight weeks. I see, Mr. Mayor, you have a meeting right here on Wednesday, May 27, 10 o'clock in your office for some of the railroad people coming down.
Yes, sir. I was forgetting. I was trying to think what you're talking about. We have a phone conference.
It's good to see the business is starting again.
Yeah, that's what your buddy, Mr. Schrewsbury.
Yes, Schrewsbury, but he has Mr. Scott. I see a bunch of names on there.
Yeah, a bunch of names.
Leroy, and I want to add my name in there if you don't mind.
Oh, you ain't, you ain't.
And it's nice to see that they're starting to spend some of that money they said we have coming.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm glad to see that we have some business going back to what we started.
You know they're going to ask us for a street closure, but we'll, we'll yield that back to them.
That's all part of, that's all part of the game.
We'll yield that back to them and tell them to decide themselves.
But I'm glad to see them coming to town. It's been a long time since they came and talked to us.
It is. It is. No, things are picking back up.
It's about time we get this thing started.
Yes, sir. Okay, we're all out of order, which is kind of fun. Marlo. Like just wherever. Yes, sir.
Yeah, real quick, I'm glad to see some of the businesses open back up. The barber shops are open back, but not full-speed, only 25% capacity, and you have to have one person. I haven't even got a haircut, and I own a barber shop. You know, and Councilwoman Guidry alluded to the fact that, you know, we need to wear our masks. And if I could just make a plea, you know, I know for a fact that the masks, well, I say a fact. Science has proven that the masks stop the spread. I also believe that when our government sees us wearing masks, they're going to move into a Phase Two quicker to allow us to go back to business as usual. So if you're rebelling, if you're not wearing a mask because you feel like you don't need to do what the government asks us to do, and you're going to do what you want to do, I think that you're helping to impede the process of moving into Phase Two, Three, Four, and whatever else we have before we can take these masks off. So comply and help us open up totally, or at least close to totally. That's it.
All right, thank you. Deidre.
I just want to say also, please continue to take the guidelines seriously. Wearing your mask, social distancing, washing your hands, using sanitizer, because the virus is not going anywhere. It doesn't seem to be going anywhere. So don't let your guard down and be left open to be one of those people that received this virus, because as we learn, it does a whole lot of bad things to your body. And in some cases, you kind of scarred for life. So this is definitely something that you don't want to get. So don't put yourself in a predicament or make yourself susceptible to getting this virus. And please, you know, please respect others, because if you don't wear a mask, you are endangering somebody else. So please, please heed the guidelines.
Thank you. Dan.
Well, first of all, I think the numbers came out today to show about the people that died in Nia Ibiriya. It was a loss. How 90% was nursing homes, assisted leniency, not the general public. So I think the more that feels...
So I think the more that goes on, the more information people can see about where's the cause and what is the cause for this virus and how to handle it. And second thing I want to say is that I want to thank the citizens of New Iberia because if you look at our last month's sales tax, it was up, the last report we got. Showing that the people in New Iberia are still supporting the local businesses. And you know, you come down New Iberia during Christmas and you see those lights down Main Street. I don't care what kind of mood you're in, I don't care what's going on in your life that makes you smile. And going down the streets in Main Street now and other areas in New Iberia, you see the people sitting outside eating at those restaurants, it makes you smile. So we are going in the right direction, but I want to thank because it takes, and we all mentioned it, how we even go and spend more money with the local businesses because we want them to survive. We need them to survive, and a bunch of them will not survive after this is over with. But I think we've given and doing the best we can. I think the citizens of New Iberia are really out there, really spending money, even though they're out of a job, to businesses to help them, to keep them in business. And that says a lot about our community. And it's always when you see something bad happens in community, they say, good comes out of it too. You can see the good in this community. And I want to thank everybody in this town, and it makes you proud to represent the people and to see what they do when you put them against the wall. Well, thank you, man.
Thank you, Dan. Dustin.
Uh, yeah, sure is my turn now to speak.
It is? Your last one?
Oh, cool.
As if I forgot somebody.
No, I'm sorry. No, I want to give a shout out to the two thousand twenty graduates of this year. Although they've been faced with some difficult circumstances and not been able to do the same things as the ones that came before them, but they have a very unique class, and it's something that they're always going to have with them and take with them for the rest of their lives. So I want to give them a shout out and tell them congratulations to all the graduates here in our city. So thank you.
Great. I don't have any remarks tonight. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June the second, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you all very much.